All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting to order the Mayor and Board of Commissioners for January the 23rd, 2018. Can I get the roll call, please?
Commissioner Autenreth.
Here.
Commissioner Braun.
Here.
Commissioner Warnock.
Here.
Commissioner Pearson.
Here.
Mayor Marion.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all of the elected officials are listening.
Will you rise with me for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow your heads with me for a brief prayer? Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of the town of Rising Sun. I ask for a hedge of protection, God, over our citizens, over our elected body and their families, God, over our police department, as well as our military and all those serving overseas. I do want to send out a special prayer for the school in Kentucky that experienced violence today. Please be with them and the families of the victims and the survivors as well, God. Watch over them. Please be with us as we leave here tonight and gather again next time. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
All right, there are no public presentations, there are no business meeting items. So first on the agenda is citizens' input. Would anyone like to speak this evening? All right, hearing none, we'll go into staff reports, Mrs. Wagner, and town financials.
Patty, keep me on the page, please.
You're going to have two months in front of you, November. And if you pass the blue tab and pass the red tab, that gets you past November. Then the yellow tab is going to be the governmental funds for December. So we're going to go through December's financial statements, okay? Sorry about that. So we're going to go to page three to the statement on net positions. Cash and cash equivalent unrestricted is $232,794.35. Investments is $95,705.33. Tax receivable and service charges receivable. Okay, I think it's working now. Okay, the receivables, and mainly this is the real estate taxes, is $437,662.20. Amount due from other governments is $21,987.76. Amount due from other funds is $220,776.56. We have cash and cash equivalent restricted, which is the last of the money sitting in the PNC for us to use for the sewer, $48,892.67, for a total assets of $1,071,330.38 in the governmental account. The accrued expenses of $270.08 is payroll tax liability. And we are going to go now to page four. We have total revenue of $1,762,402.21 and total expenditures of $1,307,548.13. We have a positive change in net position of $454,400, sorry, $454,854.08. And that's where we stand with the statement of revenue expenditures and change in net position. Now, if you go to the next page, it's your supplemental information, which gives you your budget to actuals, which all of you really like to look at. So on page six, and I'm not going to read through the numbers, you will see the budget versus actual to the general service fund. Then you will see the police, then you will see planning and zoning, and you will see public works. The next page, which is page seven, we have streets and sidewalks. We have solid waste collection, we have parks and recreation, we have debt service. And then we have, on the next page, your budget actual of the disaster response. And then you have total budget to actual. So we budgeted $1,754,917.20, and we had $1,762,402.21 come in for a positive of $7,485.10. We had that parks and recreation money come in, and that kind of made everything work out a lot better.
Yeah.
We have total expenditures that we had budgeted year-to-date of $1,128,204.60. And we have budgeted, we have actuals of $1,307,548.13. And I would say the biggest area is capital outlay, which is parks and recreation. And I presume we're still going to be reimbursed.
We're still waiting on it.
It might not happen this year, but...
No, it should be soon, actually, because I saw the check was paid, so I mean, this matter of whether we've submitted or not, I'm not sure.
So when that comes in, that's going to work out that we are pretty well on with revenue to expenditures. Any question about the general government funds? Okay, let's go to the proprietary. You're probably going to have my fastest speed yet, because standing is not an easy thing for me right now. On page three, we have the water and the sewer. Cash and cash equivalent of $1,271,033.59. The majority of this is the MLGIP, MGLIP funds. We have service charge receivables of $187,174.67. We have amount due from other funds, which basically is the due-to-do from base between water and sewer, We have cash and cash equivalent restriction of $70,445.68. And the net capital assets, which is the assets less the depreciation for water and sewer combined, is $20,968,482.77, for total assets of $23,488,979.25. We have amount due to other government, which is the bay restoration, of $27,313.84. And then we have the liability of the, between the funds of $975,663.10. And the difference between that and the $754,000 would be what's due to the government fund. Any questions with regard to that? The long-term debt is $14,633,979.70. And then we have the Southern State escrow of $10,000. We have net investment in capital assets, which is basically the assets minus the liability, of $6,334,503.70, an unrestricted net position of $1,507,519.54. We have the statement of revenue and expenditures and changes in net position for the proprietary fund. The total revenue year-to-date is $606,524.24. The total operating expenditure is $923,585.72, for a loss of $317,61.48. And I will always tell you to go back, look at depreciation, that is a non-cash item. And that is $427,617.13, and that is, would put us in the positive position. Any questions there? Okay, let's go to the supplemental information, and you can look at the budget to actual of water on your own, and the budget to actual to sewer. And then we have total budget versus actual. We budgeted $635,587.92, and we had actual come in of $606,524.24 to be under budget by $29,063.68. We have totaled expenditures of $994,338.24. We have actual $923,585.72 to be in the positive to the budget of $70,752.52. And then we budgeted $28,028.6 of connection fees, and we have received $18,075.75. Interest income, we budgeted $2,164.10, and we actually had $3,854.50. Did somebody have a question?
Nope.
Okay. The interest expense, we budgeted at $171,113.5. We came in at, so far, and there's kind of a timing situation there, of $117,616.95. Any questions with the financial statement?
Why did you say it was a timing issue?
Because the interest is divided over 12 months, and it doesn't quite get paid. It gets paid in larger increments, not on a monthly basis. So it kind of has a timing thing. Any other questions? I'm going to bring up something just because I need an answer. Did you ever respond back to, do we need to do an estimate letter again to Casey?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Is that a yes or a no?
No.
Okay, good. I just kind of, this was a crazy day for me, and I really needed an answer for that, so we could get that done. If we needed to get it done. Yes, Travis?
I just wanted to thank you for being here, and I hope you are feeling better.
Oh, I'm doing a whole lot better.
Thank you.
Hopefully, in two more months, I won't need to walk her.
All right, Chief?
We might have a sick one, but we haven't found out yet. That's coming.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. During the last two-week period, going back to January 9th, we responded to 137 calls for service. That's down, and I attribute that to cold. Cold is the best friend of a policeman at times, it helps fight crime. So I believe that number is down. However, it does cause all the issues with domestics and so forth. Our most notable case is a burglary that occurred on Ryan Drive. There was severe damage to a resident, residents done. It was a result of a domestic. In that case, an arrest has been made. We had one DUI that was resulting from an accident, and that subject also was placed under arrest. At last meeting, we spoke about Valley View and the parking issues. I met with Ron Thomas. We went down to Valley View to take another look to see what we could do better. And we will be adding additional signs to try to remedy the problems there with the parking along Valley View.
I did have a question, Chief. In the event that somebody parks along a no-parking area and a resident notices it, what should their action be?
Please call 911. I'll advise, I'll advise you against that, because that's not a good thing to do. I've noticed that there's been an uptick in the number of incidents that are trying to be reported on social media. Our social media site's not monitored 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. So we don't see that, and we don't respond to those. If you need a police officer, call 911. Okay, that's the way it works in Cecil County, that's the only way it works. If you call here during after-hours, you're not going to get someone to answer the phone. So you have to call 911 if you want to speak to a police officer or have a report taken by a police officer. Hopefully, I answered your question, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. The two police officer vacancies. The process is closed with exception, the accepting of applications. I have six of them currently. I believe I do have a qualified candidate that will rise to the top of that crop. And hopefully, we can get that person here in the police agency very soon. The next phase of the assessment is going to be a physical test. The weather has slowed that process down, because it will be outdoors, it's a mile-and-a-half run, and some other testing. So hopefully, that's going to occur very soon with, you know, the sixth officer. The police department was experiencing some problems with connectivity with their mobile terminals in the car. With the help of Verizon and another individual that has some technical expertise, we were able to figure out, yes, Mr. Warnock, I'll point you out, yes, you did help us. We were able to figure out that there is a device that could help remedy that problem. And within a few days, the officers have noticed a tremendous change in the amount of connectivity that they have on their computers in the car. What typically happens when an officer responds to your house, and it generates a report number. When the computer keeps cutting on and off, they have to log in, it takes time. And they aren't able to get the numbers and the information they need right away. Now that they stay connected, it's a matter of seconds, a matter of minutes. When he gets back in his car, he can grab that information and get it to you, and we can be on our way to the next call. So that has been remedied, and thanks, Commissioner Warnock, for your expertise in that area. In addition, I've been in contact with the Maryland State Police to revamp how warrants are handled by this agency. We have come up with a new process that seems to have been working well for the last week or two. Anytime a warrant comes to this department, it is input into the national database and the state's database by the State Police Northeast, because we do not have a clerical person here that is able to do that. Once we revamped our process, we should be completely compliant with their regulations, which have changed. And not to say we were out of compliance in the past, but we've speeded up the process to make sure that the officers are in and out and not sitting in the courtroom or in a commissioner's office for hours with a warrant, a subject that was wanted on a warrant. And lastly, members of the Rising Sun Police Department will be participating in a wing roulette. It's put, wing roulette. It's a hot wing eating contest. It's being put on by Cecil County Social Services, the, to benefit the survivors of human trafficking. So we've got some guys that look like they can eat quite a few wings, and include myself, that will be in a contest this coming week to raise money for that. And there is a donation sheet downstairs in the police area. Feel free to donate as much as you like, Lisa. And hopefully, we can raise money to help those individuals. With that, that is the end of my report, unless there's some questions about anything.
Chief, I know we had a small incident that the school's reported, but can you just give some quick facts regarding when you're, when some, when a stranger approaches, what to do if you're a child?
I'm sorry, stranger danger comes to mind. And this isn't a laughing subject, but last week, we had a young, young man walking home, or walking to school, that encountered an individual in a car that attempted to pick him up. I mean, it seems to be happening quite a bit around the county. But we, again, we're not immune from it, but it's been happening around the county. The best way to prevent or combat this is, one, it takes a community to protect a child. So if you see a kid that's out walking, take note of what's going on around that kid as you're going by. Make sure they're okay. You know, if you see a car that pulls up and starts talking to that kid, stop. You may save that kid's life. Pay attention, call the police. If it doesn't seem right to you, call us, we'll go and find out if it is. It's that simple. If it doesn't look right, it doesn't seem right, call us. We'll, we'll take a look at it and see if we can protect the child. Also, teach your children the rules of stranger danger. If they don't know a person, don't talk to them. You know, walk the opposite direction, go somewhere safe. Go to a house, knock on a door, say, "I need the police, help." Most kids have the phone now. As they're walking home, most kids have cell phones. Teach them to call you right away if something's going wrong. And make sure you call us. Don't go to social media and put it on there, call us. Social media will not get you the police any faster. You need to call 911. And with that, any additional questions?
Chief, how are you making out with the security camera issue we were having?
Last spoke with Walt, he is ordering the system to upgrade it and install it.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Town Administrator, do you have a report?
Just a couple of things I wanted to highlight. Of recent, we've had some questions asked about the annexation process. And one of the other points I think it's important to mention, and we talked about at the last meeting, the comprehensive plan. Under state requirements, the town is obligated to project areas of which future development could take place. And that's a twofold process, there's two reasons for it. Number one, if the town were to want to do something in the future in partnership with a property owner, that land has to be shown in our comp plan, and then that land also has to be shown in the county's master sewer and water plan. The, the other benefit to that is that if the town is not, if, if the town were only to do or project annexations in the future where we think they might go, it would preclude a property owner in the future who would want to pay to get into the system for being able to, be able to do that. So showing properties in an annexation plan are also for the benefit of the property owner to give them the options that they want, or they may want to pursue going forward. I wanted to give you also a quick update on the utility billing. We did have a little bit of a setback due to the extremely cold weather, because Armstrong was not able to get in to dig the trenching that was necessary to get the new cable lines into our water, water tower area. That has been completed. In addition, the town has also been instituting a redundancy plan with backup servers here in Town Hall to include upgrading those backup servers, so that if we ever have any issues in the future with somebody hacking the system, which we should not have an issue with in the future, we can fall back on the utility servers. The delay that we're experiencing right now is we are waiting for the vendor to complete the data uploads of the old system into their new system. So to some degree, we're at the mercy of them. The other thing that came up, and Chief, I didn't get a chance to say this to you. In talking to the vendor, they talked about having a rogue employee that they had an issue with in their IT area. So when, they're not suggesting that that's how we got hacked, but once we brought to their attention the issues that we have, they apparently have looked and have found some other anomalies in their back room operations of their IT department. And that's something that you and I had talked about when this first happened, of being able to potentially pursue something like that. And so that's it, we're going to do another month of estimated bills. The one thing we want to encourage people is, we understand that some people, there are some vacant homes, there are some properties that people go down to Florida in the wintertime. And our estimated bill is not going to pick that up. We have been working with people who have come back and have said, "Hey, I've been in Florida for the last three, four months." We have gone out and done an actual read on the meter, so that they don't continue to get hit with a higher estimated bill than is necessary. So for the general public, if anybody has that issue, please let us know, and we can get that corrected sooner than later. That's all I have.
Thank you, Town Administrator. Moving into the Mayor's report, I don't have a lot tonight. I did want to say that myself and Commissioner Warnock attended the sheriff and chief's reception in Annapolis along with Chief Peterson. This was Chief Peterson's first time going, and my first time going also as mayor. Great event. Big thank you to all the sheriffs and chiefs who were there that night and throughout the state of Maryland that continue to protect us every single day, along with their departments. Had a great conversation with the deputy chief of staff for Governor Hogan and with the lieutenant governor about coming back up to visit us soon. So we are definitely on their radar, and I'm excited about potentially hosting them again. The Rising Sun Historical Society hosted a packed event with Bud McFadden and Mr. Shellcross. And they talked about being business owners here, from the '40s all the way up into the millennium. It was an amazing event. They both brought different items from their businesses, from Western Auto and Shellcross Butchers. But it was amazing to hear their stories, myself and Commissioner Autenreth were here, and so was Commissioner Braun. But just to listen to them, and like I said, it was a packed house, it was a great event. And a big thank you to, for both of them for being part of our community for so long. So that concludes my report. I did want to recognize the scout we have here in our audience from Scout 92. Thank you so much for coming tonight. And like I said in the beginning, hopefully, we don't bore you too much. So moving forward into Commissioner comments, Commissioner Autenreth.
Couple of things, one, because of the cold weather, since our last meeting, we've had three more water main breaks. Our guys, you know, have been pretty busy and out there in that cold weather, digging up wet, muddy ground and fixing those back up. And hats off to them, they do it pretty quickly. And I'm working on a figure to find out what this winter is going to cost us in just water main breaks alone, which is something we have no control over. Ground freezing, thawing, expanding, contracting, you know, it's the, for the officers, it's a, it's a good thing, crime prevention, but for our public works guys and our town infrastructure, it's terrible. And when the ground goes from, you know, when we go from minus seven and down to three degrees and stuff, back up in the 60s like this, man, it's just every day we see another one leaking someplace. So guys have been staying pretty busy with that. We were at the Cecil Night in Annapolis a couple of weeks ago, and I spoke to Renee Dixon, who owns Freedom Hills Therapeutic Riding. And even though they're over there closer to Port Deposit, they service the whole area in Hartford County. And she's got, you know, they're always in need out there of donations. They've got a gala coming up this Friday, the 26th. You know, they are, this is, this event is a gala and auction, its theme is bring home the 60s. So there's still time to get tickets for this event or make donations. They do a lot of great work out there. We have people right here in our community that go out there, and the therapeutic riding makes a big difference in lives of children and adults. So we just ask, if anybody wants any information, I have this flyer up here. But if you can, go out and support their family. As you remember, they were the Ty Pennington and the, was it the Extreme Home Makeover? Is that what the show was called, where they got the new house built and all out there? She said the house has been treating them pretty well, but the farm has always, you know, got an expense. Because, you know, people with handicaps... Because, you know, people with handicapped adults and children have a large expense, and they, they like to help them out. So if you can, support the Freedom Hills area out there. So other than that, you know, we continue to meet with Chester Water and our legal team and our engineers on the water line as we're working with through this severe weather that keeps you from digging anything up. We have more things, more i's to dot and t's to cross that we're working on. Looking forward to having a nice groundbreaking in the spring after this, this crazy weather we're having this year goes through. I think that's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Althanreth. Commissioner Braun?
Well, the town has been in and out of sewer and water moratoriums since the mid-1990s. We expect that there will be an interest in development in the near future. In the past week alone, the town administrator has received more than a dozen calls and inquiries on how to proceed with investments in our community. We have responsibility as an elected body and community to make sure that we are well-versed and able to carefully review these development requests. We will learn from the past and make sure that these new land development requests are properly vetted and viewed with, with compliance with our land development and zoning codes. We must provide our existing planning commission and board of appeals members with the proper tools and knowledge to address the unintended consequences that can occur when development is not properly vetted and reviewed. Over the past twelve months, the planning commission has been reviewing the town's land development, zoning, and comprehensive plans to ensure that our policies are consistent with recognized land development concepts. In the coming months, we will be releasing many changes to our codes to help ensure that these new developments properly balance the rights of the property owners and development, developers without compromising the residents of our community and to further ensure that our new developments yield positive benefits to our community. Equally important is making sure that our planning commission and board of zoning appeals members are properly trained on how to review applications and conduct effective meetings. We recently took the first step at improving these, those skills by conducting an effective meetings training seminar for our board members on January 15th. Our town attorney, who is a leading authority in the state on municipal government, was the guest instructor. His presentation included a comprehensive presentation covering such topics as conflicts of interest, site visits and ex-party communications, relevant testimony, what to expect from our staff, the consequences of setting precedents, irrelevant testimony and keeping the meeting moved, moving, and types of approval that can be granted. Many of our board members are inexperienced when it comes to serving on planning, commission, and board of zoning appeals. Many of the issues covered in the session were experienced during recent hearings and cases. The session was very well-attended, and many questions were asked. In general, the consensus of opinion was that it was successful and positive. The session was also recorded for future reference and to provide continued training for our current and future board members.
Thank you, Commissioner Braun. Commissioner Pearson?
Okay, we have the one candidate who has passed all of the requirements for becoming a police officer. His name is Elijah Thomas Thompson, and we are offering him his jo- a job as a police officer in the town of Rising Sun. He is currently serving in another jurisdiction, and he has to resign from that jurisdiction before he can start with us. Second thing is, so far, the Blue Breakfast is going much better than I thought it was going to go. We've had a local business who has donated a very good amount of food for us. So that, that will be a big help on the budget ends.
What's the business? The business?
Performance Food Group. And, yeah, they've, they've, they're giving us a fantastic amount of food to help that day. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Warnock?
I don't have a whole lot tonight, actually. The one thing I wanted to thank Commissioner Braun for, you know, what she just stated. I, I did manage to get to it late that evening. It was, you know, the part that I saw was really good. You know, and I'm, I'm glad to hear that we're going to soon be introducing some of that code. I know that Commissioner Althanreth and, and Commissioner Braun and myself, all three have, at different times on the planning and zoning board, worked on some of those ordinances that we've been working on.
And Commissioner Pearson.
Were you, no, the, the, the stuff that we're talking about was, were you recently on the board?
I was on the planning and zoning twelve years ago.
Yeah, we started those ordinances like six years ago.
Back in the old days.
But I acknowledge Commissioner Pearson was on the board. I was just saying that the code we're talking about, we started after Commissioner Pearson. Anyway. I'm sure he has, his experience has contributed to, to us working on that code. Anyway. The one thing I would like to announce is the section of the railroad bed from Maryland Route 273 to Maryland Route 274, otherwise Main Street to Queen Street, has been turned over to the town of Rising Sun. So we're gonna start working on the planning for that section of the Rails Trails, and we're working with the county on the remaining sections. So hopefully, we'll have some good news in the next few months on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Warnock.
Thank you.
I just wanted to remind people of some important dates coming up. One is our planning commission workshop, and that is going to be, what is the date for that, Commissioner Braun?
The next one is February 5th, but
Okay.
Following that, February 26th.
So it's February 5th and then February 26th for the planning and commission. Our next town meeting will be February the 13th, and then we have another one on February the 27th. Upcoming events, as Commissioner Pearson said, our law enforcement appreciation breakfast will be February 16th at 8:30 a.m. at R.T. Ford's Community Hall. And then the Tiger Trot 5K, which is also a great event put on by the Rising Sun Middle School, will be April the 21st, 2018.
Mr. Mayor, it should be 8 o'clock.
8 o'clock, okay. So 8 o'clock a.m. Thank you, Commissioner Pearson. So the Board of Commissioners will be moving into an executive session at the end of this meeting. And that is to discuss personnel. But thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you.